Seven o'clock, I will call the meeting to order where City of Waverly, Mayor Hoffman is gone tonight, so I will be presiding. First order of business is roll call. City Clerk, call a roll.
Vote for?
Here.
Bergen?
Here I am.
Myers?
Here.
Kingas?
Present.
Raffi?
Present.
Schneider?
Here.
And Drinko is absent.
Second, our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item D would be the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion on that?
We move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
By Myers, second by Bergen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have our agenda. Next item is approval of the July 17th, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the July 17th, 2023 minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Raffi, second by Bergen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approve our minutes. Our guest councilperson for month of August will be Becky Ertsman. And I will allow you to introduce yourself a little bit more.
Yes, pleasure to be with you all tonight. My name is Becky Ertsman. I may normally formally as Becky Neduski, but I have had a name change procedure. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight on behalf of Whorfburg College where I serve as the 18th and first female president. We look forward to welcoming back four, we're right now at 469 first year students. Last year we were at 351. So we had an excellent admissions year. We're incredibly proud of the team that's bringing that great group of new students to our campus. We are also very excited about our football team that is ranked number five nationally, Division III. So we hope you'll come out and join us for our first football game, which is Saturday night, September 2nd. And then our next game at home is September 16th. So we look forward to welcoming you to all of our events and music recitals and athletic competitions and cultural events this year at Whorfburg. So it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And kind of rules of order, you have all permission to the councilman participant in discussions, you just don't get to vote. Okay, item G is public hearings. The date, time, and place for a public hearing to receive and consider any objections made by any interested party to the artist's proposal and anticipated cost for the Waverly Public Library Children's Tree Sculpture. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed. Do you have any written or oral comments?
I do not, Your Honor.
Good. Any public comments? Seeing no one rise, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion for Resolution 23-112.
I will move approval of Resolution 23-112. A resolution confirming artist ironclad art for a story tree art sculpture as part of the Waverly Municipal Library's renovation project.
Second.
Okay. Did you want to include the not to exceed cost?
Oh, is that part of the?
I'm speaking on the online agenda.
It is online.
Okay, and?
For 145.
Okay. So this is to prove Resolution 23-112, a resolution confirming ironclad, don't need a roll? Okay, never mind. Confirming iron, artist ironclad art of West Des Moines, Iowa for a story tree art sculpture as part of the Waverly Municipal Library's renovation project for a not to exceed cost of 145,000. Second.
Still second. Okay. And we want to have any discussion, any introductions there or anything on this? We've had it. People have had the opportunity to be at the library and see some of the samples, what it's going to look like. I will admit that it looked a lot differently than what I, when they first mentioned a tree in the library. I was a little skeptical, but when I saw it, I was pretty impressed with what's going to be there. Be interesting to see how it ultimately turns out, but.
I just have one quick question. The reference to the Easter egg silhouettes. So I was picturing Easter eggs and then I read monkeys, squirrels, and birds.
I think the architects were just trying to come up with a way to say they're going to plant some kinds of surprises in the tree for kids to look for as they look up into the tree.
So they'll be stationary there. They're not going to be things that like move around that the kids look for. Thank you.
Yep.
I just had a quick question, more procedural question. Since this is being paid through the library foundation, is it necessary to come to council?
We wrestled with that quite a bit, actually. And when you're talking about our vertical infrastructure and the legal limits when it comes to Iowa code, we thought it'd be best to err on a conservative nature to bring it to council anyway. Because when it's finished, that structure will be anchored and become part of the building itself. Therefore, still is a city property structurally inside of it. And so, again, we may not have had to have come, but we still wanted to be public, wanted to be out there so that it was done above board and everyone could see what we're doing and what it looks like. That's a great question.
Very good. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vote for?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Kingas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
A vote of six yeses, one absent, no zero, no nos. Resolution 23-112 is adopted. Item H is time for public comments on items not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. We have any public comments? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to item I, which is our consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by a voice vote and a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one is a pay request from Quality Flow Systems for a new vortex pump for the Sixth Avenue Lift Station for $19,800. Item two is a pay request from McClure Engineering for the Waverly Municipal Airport. Construct taxiway connector, Construction Management Administration and Observation Services for $2,162.95. Item three is a pay request from McClure Engineering for the Waverly reconstruct S T-hanger taxi lanes, South T-hanger taxi lanes, C A services for $2,132.67. Item four is a pay request from McClure Engineering for the Waverly Municipal Airport. Reconstruct South T-hanger taxi lane for $1,198. Item five is a pay request from Grider Construction Incorporated for the water pollution facility improvements for $298,589.75. Item six is a purchase of an H&amp;H 82 by 18 plus four gravity tilt equipment trailer, 16K color black steel drive over fender toolbox, tongue mounted with pintle hitch from Cedar Valley Sales and Service, ink for $10,950. Item seven is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the tail race wall removal for $1,217.28. Item eight is a Class C retail alcohol license renewal application for Bremer Brewing Company. Item nine is a Class C retail alcohol license renewal application for Cobblestone Inn and Suites. And item 10 is the cash disbursements for June 2023. Have a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as read by Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Raffi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, six, nothing, one absent. Consent calendar is adopted. We move on to the regular business. Item one is Resolution 23-114, a resolution approving engagement agreement between the City of Waverly and Williams and Company PC for audit services of financial statements of the governmental activities and business type activities for the year ended June 30th, 2023. We have a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-114, approving an engagement agreement between the City of Waverly and Williams and Company PC for audit services of financial statements of the governmental activities and business type activities for the year ended June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Any discussion? This is our group that we've had for years and we have to do this every year to stay in line?
Yes, sir. Legally outlines our obligations, their obligations. On the end of this discrepancy, we can point to this and say whose responsibility is where. And their information's only as good as the information provided to the city.
Any council discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Kingas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
A vote of six yes, zero nos, one absent. 23-114 is adopted. Item two is Resolution 23-115, a resolution approving change order number four to the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 Project. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-115, approving change order number four to the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 Project for an increase of $92,551.
Second.
Motion by Raffi, second by Bergen. Mr. Broner, want to give us a little bit of update on how that, what's going on with this? Because this is going a little longer than was anticipated.
A little longer is a kind way to put it, sir. We're still trying to progress and finish this. We're not quite a year behind, but it's getting to that point. So anytime you go into a project this size, this is approaching close to 13, 14 million now to redo part of the sewer system that goes through the water pollution control center. You're going to have change orders such as this, whether you get the bedrock you didn't anticipate, some of this, to quantities being corrected. And even when you're in the field engineering to make things quicker, to make them move faster, some of this accommodates that as well. So Justin, I don't know if you want to touch base briefly on a few of the items that we've been encountering there, but we're hoping to wrap this up in the fall. That's our best case scenario.
Some of the items that are listed here, some of it including sampler systems, basically it's outdated equipment added to the project. We've had some failing project, equipment during this project as well. That happens during this long process, stuff that was supposed to be replaced, that additional things. The valves and stuff listed here, additional items. It's basically so we can isolate the tanks, just simple fixes that the contractor actually suggested that people want to see.
Nothing of that normal about this. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer them. Like I said, it's once you start getting in the ground and you're starting to retrofit a lot of this in, by all means take a tour and go out and see it. It's an impressive feat, the amount of concrete that's used for this. But that also results in change orders that you can't possibly foresee three years ago when this was getting engineered started, so.
Well, yeah, I understand. This is a $13 million project, change orders. Let's see the data bin, about half a million. Is there a point where the change orders, oh, we have to look at this as it could increase rates? I mean, eventually it's going to get in the rate somehow. But I guess my question is, has something happened with inflationary costs? It becomes more immediate. And hopefully we're not there yet where we're at, but.
We've already adjusted rates to accomplish this.
Okay.
Over the years, you recall, we would raise certain amounts here, there. We've already done the rate increases to make the payments when SRF finally kicks in and all the money we need is borrowed. I think we're still within that window, but it's getting very tight. So we don't anticipate a lot of additional change orders. A lot of the in-ground work is done. It's more of the piping, it's more of the above ground. So we're getting closer to being to a point where it is going to be operational. And it is now, just not 100% complete. And so the rate increases, as we talked about year after year after year, might get done earlier. It's a great job doing it. We're in a position we shouldn't have to do another rate increase at this point in time, not based on this. And so hopefully if this continues to unfold the way we think it will, we'll be okay with our payments as we have them currently structured.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a follow-up for Justin. So the parts that had problems were those parts that were already being used and have just failed with wear and tear?
Correct. Some of them were just, they're aging out, basically. That's why they were slated to be replaced. And then there's additional things that have gone along with some of those. And things come off, you know, that's basically what happened.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Vote for?
Yes.
Kingas?
Yes. Six, by a vote of six yes, zero nos. Resolution 23-115 is adopted. Item three is the first reading of ordinance 1127, repealing portions 105.1 to 105.7 of Chapter 105 Traffic Code and replacing those portions with new sections 105.1 through 105.7. Have a motion.
I will approve, move to approve the first reading of ordinance 1127, repealing portions 105 dot one through 105 dot seven of Chapter 105 Traffic Code and replacing those portions with new sections 105 dot one through 105 dot seven.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Myers. Any discussion on these? More dealing with some of the schools?
It's more extensive than that. If you look at the first section of 105 point one, it's the definitions and then the state provisions that we adopt. It's been quite a while since we have conformed those with the state, the actual state sections that we're bringing into our code through just the reference to those code numbers. And so all that read in the first list of 321 numbers is basically just making it the same as the state code and just correcting those things. The second section is the speed section, which basically what I did is I made it easier to read. So we just put the streets that we're talking about in with an underline at the beginning. So that's just adding that. Then we've put speed limits for the new streets, 30th Street Northwest and North Ridge Parkway at 25 miles per hour. It's expected that when those streets are extended, they may be, the speed limit might be raised because they're going to be designed for a faster speed because they're such a short section that goes to the schools that we're going to leave it at 25 and keep it slow for that at the first. The rest of it is basically just cleaning up. I don't think there's any changes beyond that. And then you get to the handicap parking. We've made, we did some clarifications on that, took out some things that aren't being used. City-owned parking lots. We tried to identify those parking areas so that whether, how many spaces they have in those parking lots, that kind of thing. Then you get to the additional parking restrictions, which get, got very complicated because everything was kind of mixed together. You had things being added in the middle of it. So I tried to go back and put the numbers in more of an order so it's easier to follow, so easier to find. And then we've made some corrections and some, there were some duplications. Whatever there, what do you ever think there could be, it was in there? I mean, that we had to change because there were some times when it, it just didn't read very well. And so we've tried to clean it up. And it's been about a one to two-year project. And D Heine was real instrumental in helping with a lot of this, too. So it's just a matter of getting it cleaned up, correcting a few things. I think on North 12th Street, there's going to be parking on 12th Street from Seventh?
Seventh Avenue.
Seventh Avenue, all the way up to, before you get to the street up there, there's a sidewalk that comes across. And we identified that as the limit of that parking. What that allows is, what's been happening already is that during cross-country meets, people are parking on the street. There's plenty of room for it. There's provision for it on the streets. So we just decided to let it be legal to do that. So it's appropriate to do that. There's a couple other places, and I don't remember all of the little things that may have been a correction from a half a block or some parts. But we tried to, D was out doing a lot of scouting. I would do it on Beacon. We'd try to make it work and get it corrected. There's some additions for Eighth Street and Crestwood, over by the ball complex here at River Park. We did say no parking on Crestwood and Eighth Street, except for improved designated parking areas when they're developed. So we just left that open-ended so that when they are developed, there'll be, there'll likely be parking when they're there. Beyond that, there's just a lot of corrections. I don't know if anybody, obviously nobody found it and said, yeah, you did my street wrong. So if we do that, we'll have to fix it at some other point. But try to get this cleaned up for now and move forward. There's the school zones are changed. What I actually did was put the numbers on them. And then we put in, for the two that were going to be removed, the junior high and the Irving Mills School, school zones, I added the Prairie West Elementary School Zone and the North Ridge Elementary School Zone. And then we left southeast Cary and West Cedar as four, five, and six. So when those are no longer school zones, we'll just delete those, we'll just remove those sections. Beyond that, I think there's a provision with redlining and there's a provision that's clean. So hopefully we adopt the clean one.
Didn't we already do the first reading?
We started, but since we had to make a change.
Oh, okay. We have to start over?
Yeah. Hopefully we won't start over again. We'll just fix it if we have something. We'll do it later. I've got a kind of an omnibus, one coming that's doing one section in a lot of different places. So we're trying to get those a little cleaned up. But we can do that if we have, if we find anything.
I like the fact that we're lowering it to 45 on 218 out of town there. That was something I had a complaint from citizens before, so.
The school zone is actually 35 and goes to about the curve. And then the curve is actually, is where it goes to 55, but we're going to sign it on the other side of the curve so that people don't see that until they get around the curve.
When would we see those take place as we get these?
When we get it passed all the way through and then when the guys are able to get out there and do it.
So it would be this fall then sometime?
Yeah, the more important ones will get done first. And the rest of it is, there's a lot of, there's some no parking stuff that's going to have to be rearranged. And those are probably less, you know, we can, we can do, we need to do the speed first, especially by the schools, just to get people used to those signs.
Have you had any feedback from the neighborhood at the Ball Diamonds? I haven't heard anything recently about parking.
I don't think so. You know, none of the streets, you know, during soccer contests, there's no parking on Eighth Street and the police have to go and put all the signs up. So it's a lot easier than doing that. On the north side, it's the way the road is platted to, it's, there's some difficulties there. But it's hard to have parking on the side of the street because it's a narrow street and you get a lot of, we're going to have to figure something out. But it's, at least we can get started with not having the dangerous situations, so.
I was, the parking by the cross-country course, I agree with because I've been parking there now. The one part that is still, the way I read this, technically not allowed to be parking is that area across, on the, crossing the tennis courts. It's listed from going from Bremer Avenue all the way to Seventh Avenue, which is across the railroad tracks.
You mean on the west side?
On the west side.
Yes.
And so I know with Football Saturday is coming up, there's a lot of tailgating that takes place with people parking there in that section between Fifth Avenue and railroad tracks with campers and trailers, or not necessarily trailer, but campers and setting up tailgating events.
I'm assuming that we'll be patient before we get signs up so that people, although that's already no parking, so it's not a change.
Yeah, I mean, that's another one where they've always been parking. Is there a problem with making that legal for them to have? Is there a problem with making that legal for them to have that for?
Well, I think the, the purpose was to not have it between that Seventh and the railroad track, but have it on the side where you have the tennis court, so they can use that side, the east side.
Okay, they, yeah, they park on the east side by the tennis courts, because, well, and when they play, people are at the tennis courts, they park there, but I'm just specifically on Football Saturdays, they park in, from that Fifth to the railroad tracks in there. And is it, my question is, is that a safety issue? They're not parking on the railroad tracks, I haven't seen anybody do that, but there are plenty of vehicles that get in there.
I think, I think over the years, we've been patient with special events that require a lot of parking. I'm assuming as long as they're not endangering any place at this point, we're not going to get too excited about it.
Would it be a problem to make it legal?
It has to determine the distance to the tracks.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think there's enough room to figure that out. I mean, I, we figured by going Seventh up.
Right.
That we were probably doing fine and not being next to the tracks. And the area by the tennis court, they're right there, people don't have to go across the street to park on the other side, so.
Okay.
We, you can think about that for another change at a point, because I don't want to start over again.
That was the only one I noticed, is you just kind of said Seventh, and I go, okay, well, no, Seventh is here, and there's still quite a bit between there and Fifth.
Yeah, the west side does go all the way down, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, or, yeah, roll call vote on this.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Vote of six yeses, zero noes, ordinance first reading 1127 is approved. Item four is the first reading of ordinance 1128, adopting various changes to Chapter 88, street closings for block parties of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances. We have a motion.
I will move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1128, adopting various changes to Chapter 88, street closings for block parties of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Raffi. Discussion on this one?
As you recall, I, I had this as a first reading the last time, and we changed one section, and that's on, the fireworks will not be prohibited, or will not be permitted without a city permit issued pursuant to Waverly Code, Section 104.401 2A. So it's just basically says you can have fireworks, but you have to, you have to do a permit, so, that's the only change that was made.
On this, is there a reason we don't have city parking lots in this? You know, and then, and I guess, two-part question, can I have a block party in a city parking lot, and what do I need to do to do that?
What we've done in the past is, people will suggest, especially in, maybe in the downtown, that they want to do an outdoor, a party in the park, in a parking lot, and the council gets, or the staff gets to look at that, the administrator, and decide what recommendation we would make to whether they could do that. And we have allowed that to happen, because it's kind of hard to find space in those areas where you can do that kind of thing, and help the downtown merchants and downtown people that are wanting to use that kind of a block park. It isn't really a block party, we just call the, we just block the parking lot. That's a block party, this is street closings.
Block party in the parking lot?
Yeah.
It's kind of a special event permit.
Yeah, special event.
I guess, we asked this differently, is there a reason we wouldn't want to put that in this code?
It's in a different section.
Oh, it is?
The special events, for special events.
Good for that.
And I did move the block parties to that, because I thought leaving at the street closings for block parties was just fine, because it's really a different thing than a special event.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times, they just close the, each end of a block in a neighborhood, and they, you know, they do that kind of thing. It's a little different than a special event, or sometimes it's different.
No further discussion? Roll call?
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bowfor.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfor.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfor.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Vote of six yeses, zero noes, first reading of ordinance 1128 is passed. Item five is the first reading of ordinance 1129, repealing Chapter 96 of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances. We have a motion on this.
I will move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1129, repealing Chapter 96 of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Myers. This one's a little different, network.
I think I have to apologize for this one, because I think we could have had this one on the second one, because I forgot, I just did them all that way. Sorry.
Is this the second?
Well, it's only, it's only the first reading, we'll just start, we'll just keep the ball going the same way.
Okay. But this one is just repealing, we're not replacing it with anything?
We're not, we're just repealing it. It is still something that can be used by the city on a case-by-case basis, under the state law.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Bowfor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfor.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Vote of six yeses, zero noes, first reading of ordinance 1129 is passed. Item six is the first reading of ordinance 1130, replacing Chapter 50, beer and liquor permits of the Waverly Code of Ordinances, with a new Chapter 50, retail alcohol licenses, wine and beer permits. We have a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1130, replacing Chapter 50, beer and liquor permits of the Waverly Code of Ordinances, with a new Chapter 50, retail alcohol licenses, wine and beer permits.
Second.
So this one was a little bit, one of the issues that was raised in the last time was that there was a section that said you couldn't serve if you were under 18. And I know the state law has changed that, although it says you can't serve still unless you have certain conditions that are met. And what I found out is that the provisions that we had in this section were also in another section that is a more appropriate place for all those types of offenses, in the public offenses section. So I did not, I just took it out of this one, so, because this is really about permits, not about the enforcement. What we'll do is I'll, I'm going to wait till the codification comes out on the, the new language on the state one, we'll, I'll incorporate that into a single amendment to that other section when it comes out, about the 18, the restriction on 18. And so far, we can't enforce it anyway, because it's, we can't violate state law, we can't say it's, if it's legal in state law, it can't be against the law in our ordinance.
So, okay, so clarify that. So you're taking out the line in the section 50.29?
I actually took out all of the, all of those sections that were.
It's 50.29 is where they talk about the age you have to be to sell.
But only, every, the only stuff that's left is basically 5001 to 5006.
Yes.
So it's like 5007 and all, it's just removed.
So I took everything out.
Okay.
All the rest of it out.
So I wondered, have you just forgotten to give us all those pages, or you just removed it?
The same provisions were all in the other section, under the public offenses. And it's more appropriate for them to be in that section.
Okay.
And I didn't want to just pick that one out and do it by itself, because again, I'm going to bring another one back in another month or so, and fix about four or five different things, and so we can just do those, one section at a time.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote on this?
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bowfor.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bowfor.
Here.
Yes.
By a vote of six yeses, zero noes, first reading ordinance 1130 is passed. Item number seven is Resolution 23-116, a resolution approving an FAA grant agreement for federal assistance, SF 424, 319-0096-016AIP, to cover the eligible construction related to project expenses, and authorize the mayor to sign the grant for the Construct Taxiway Connector.
Second.
Motion by Snyder, second by Bergen. Any discussion on this? Just making sure we get the FAA to cover their, the expenses that they cover for us.
Yes, sir.
As I recall, we talked about this extensively last time, that kind of, there's two different grants for two different aspects of the, of the thing.
Okay, roll call vote?
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bowfor.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes. By a vote of six yeses, zero noes, Resolution 23-116 is adopted. Item number eight is Resolution 23-117, a resolution approving quoted option number one from Tetro Electric Incorporated for converting wiring from 120 volt to 240 volt at the Waverly Municipal Airport. We have a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-117, a resolution approving quoted option number one from Tetro Electric Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa, to convert the Waverly Municipal Airport's 11-bifold T-hanger door motors from 120 volt to 240 volt for the quoted price of $5,250.
Second.
Motion by Raffi, second by Myers. Discussion on this.
Any comments, Mike?
If there are any questions above and beyond, with some agenda memo, I'm here and happy to address them.
I suppose my only concern is that this is being funded out of excess funds that are kind of leftovers from something else, so it kind of isn't really budgeted. On the other hand, you know, this is why it makes sense, it got approved by the Airport Commission, but I, I think it's bad practice to say, oh, we've got leftover money, let's like, find a way to spend it. Not that I think that's what's going on here, but that's kind of the only thing that sets off little buzzers in the back of my head.
Had the funding not been there, we would have amended it accordingly. This is the point where the electricity was actually reducing, as you went further into the building, to the point it couldn't run the openers, and it was necessary to get that prepared made.
Yep.
So we didn't have a lot of choice, if we were going to just let this go and possibly damage.
Could burn those up, I think, Karen?
You will.
Yeah. So we are, we are fortunate that the airport cash reserves have been increasing due to some federal funds that have come our way, and as a result, we've checked and we're able to fund the local match for the taxiway connector and the taxi lane reconstruction. And there was still 15,000 in cash reserves, and this will draw that down another $5,200. So the Airport Commission is very mindful of the budget and looking at what resources are available.
But the doors need to go up, when they need to go up.
You did not burn out the motors when you were doing this, this was getting close.
Roll call vote?
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bowfor.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Vote of six yeses, zero noes, Resolution 23-117 is adopted. Item number nine is Resolution 23-118, approving a resolution calling for an election on the question of change in use of local option sales and service tax revenue in the city of Waverly, Iowa. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-118, approving a resolution calling for an election on the question of change in use of a local option sales and service tax revenue in the city of Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. I will let Mr. Bronner explain this a little bit.
Yes, sir. As we've discussed through budget multiple times before the legislature ended, we were hoping to provide a new aquatic center pool system, a new clubhouse, a golf course, as we purchased that outright to get that, and a whole slew of other things we wanted to do. Instead of taxing 100% for those, which I don't think is a good idea at all, we're looking at trying to utilize some of the local option sales tax, because all of those items bring in a lot of people from outside the community, so the community itself should not be the only one spending for them. In order to do that, because the state law does call out specifically for general corporate purpose, pool, golf course by name, we felt it necessary to not do the assumption that it would be called a park, because golf course, while it is green space, is not a park, and pool, while it's in the park, is not specifically a park. We wanted to get that crystal clear with the bonding attorneys, that we have that approved by the public. Our initial goal, to, was to, this chokes me, I'm talking about this. So, it's a napping, I don't know. Our initial goal was to have this vote in the fall, as we're trying to do now, put the pool vote on, because both of those take a referendum, put that on in March, and then have the golf course in the next fall, when the legislature approved their list of things that were not real friendly to local government, we now can't do that anymore. Everything has to go to the fall. So we're still going to attempt to get our revenue purpose statement changed, to allow for possibly using some local option sales tax to offset the cost of the taxes for this, and then we'll have to decide next year if we do the pool by itself, golf course by itself, together, that's something we'll work through in the budget process this fall, but that'll be something we'll have to figure out at this point. So first and foremost, we want to see if we can get an additional funding source through this vote for the public, because I don't know that there's going to be a really good option if we don't, because directly taxing for it while we have the capacity to do it, I don't like. I don't think it's a good idea, I think it puts a lot of burden on just the community, when others will certainly utilize this from across the area. So that is the purpose that we've kind of discussed, kind of a timeline going forward, what we hope to see, and depending on the outcome, then we'll readjust if we need to or continue forward.
So this doesn't raise another sales tax?
No, sir.
It's the same one we've had in place, or was voted on a couple years ago?
2019.
That was approved. It just changes our language, where we're saying what we're going to use it for, where it's previously been for roads and emergency services.
Trails and bridges.
Trails and bridges and parks. This includes the pool and the golf course, because.
Some would say parks may cover this, because it's in the park, I don't believe that to be the case, that's why it's called specifically out in the Iowa Code separately. So we want to also specifically call it out separately in our purpose for revenue, so that we also have a coverage from the public, and there where exactly as to what is happening with that funding.
So you plan to put this on the ballot this fall?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So there's the line in here, which is 0% for property tax relief?
Correct.
Is that something that has been specified in the past, are we obligated to do that because of the state?
It's been in there the entire time.
Okay, well, it's not listed under the current uses of the tax, which is why, I mean, we have proposed uses and current uses, and that 0% for property tax relief is under the proposed, but isn't under the current, so.
It's just something that we're pushing forward, we're not making any changes to.
Okay.
That's why the proposed language is the only language changing, the current use is still there and allowed.
When it was voted on previously, the 0% was in there, because essentially, it is already, all of it is offsetting property taxes.
Right.
Because we're using this instead of property taxes for it.
Right.
But it's, it's not.
But we're not using this directly as reducing taxes?
That's a difficult thing to show.
It's one of those semantics of, if we didn't have this, we would have to use property taxes.
Property taxes.
So it is, by having it, property tax relief.
It's a 100% relief, and to be correct, because if you don't do it, then it's not there in the property tax law.
Okay.
Fun up the language.
It's like, yeah.
It's semantics.
It's stake everyone, what are you going to do?
Okay. No further discussion. Roll call vote.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote for.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
By a vote of six yes, zero noes, resolution 23-118 is adopted. Item number 10 is resolution 23-119, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance for Feldman Concrete and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution 23-119, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Feldman Concrete of Dyersville, Iowa, to reconstruct the Southside Alley in the 900 block of West Bremer Avenue behind the other Place Two Restaurant for a total project cost of $75,957.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Discussion on this.
I'm just following through the winning bidder to get this project started, sir.
Roll call vote.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote for.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
By a vote of six yes, zero noes, resolution 23-119 is adopted. Item number 11 is resolution 23-120, a resolution approving purchase of a 2023 Dodge Durango for the Police Department. Do we have a motion?
I will move approval of resolution 23-120, a resolution approving the purchase of a 2023 Dodge Durango four-door all-wheel drive for the Police Department from Stu Hansen Dodge, City of Des Moines, Iowa, for the purchase price of $40,496.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Discussion on this.
I was sad there was no picture. Chief, that's all we like, pictures. Is this, are we moving away from leasing cars? Is this for a squad car or for a different purpose?
So this is an investigative vehicle. So we lease the patrol vehicles, but yes, in the future we will not be leasing. The company that we went through is not going to do that either. So this replaces the 2012 investigative vehicle.
Normally we have these on the consent agenda. It was over budget by a matter of hundreds of dollars, so to follow policy, we put it on as a separate item to make you aware, the funds have been covered, but we didn't want to not do that, even though it was only literally a few hundred dollars, so that's why you see it as a separate action item.
Roll call vote.
Vote for.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
By a vote of six yes, zero noes, resolution 23-120 is adopted. Item 12 is resolution 23-121, a resolution accepting Cedar River Park Phase Three bid one, bid package one project as complete, and approving final payment to Cardinal Construction Incorporated for the dugouts and handrails. Do we have a motion on this?
I'll move to approve resolution 23-121, a resolution accepting the Cedar River Park Phase Three bid package one project as complete and approving final payment to Cardinal Construction for the dugouts and handrails in the amount of $12,865.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Discussion on this.
How'd they turn out?
Here to answer that question, I think they look very nice.
Yep, everything turned out very well. I mean, we're happy with the dugouts, the teams have been happy with the dugouts. Can't say enough good about them. So, yep, we're very happy with them.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote for.
Yes.
By a vote of six yes, zero noes, resolution 23-121 is adopted. Item 13 is resolution 23-122, a resolution accepting the Cedar River Park Baseball Softball Development Phase Three bid packages three and four, restrooms, concession stand, and press boxes as complete, and approving pay application number six as the final pay request in the amount of $31,042.35.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Any discussion on this?
Did they leave the first floor unfinished, basically, like in the two-story?
Oh, you're talking the press boxes?
Yeah.
Yep. Yes, the press boxes are unfinished inside. There's storage in the lower level, and then there's room in one of them for kind of like a conference room, you know, table and chairs and stuff, but it is all unfinished at the time, so. But that was the plan, it's to be unfinished.
And are we still waiting on the bid package two?
Uh, no, you guys already approved that. That was for the maintenance building.
Okay, so we already did number two. Excellent. So this is the last of them?
Correct.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote for.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
By a vote of six yes, zero noes, resolution 23-122 is approved. Item 14 is resolution 23-123, a resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Waverly and WHKS and Company to begin engineering the replacement of the Baskins Creek Trail Bridge. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution 23-123, a resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Waverly and WHKS and Company to begin engineering the replacement of the Baskins Creek Trail Bridge for a not-to-exceed amount of $79,000.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Discussion on this one.
So just to clarify, that's the engineering cost, not the cost of replacing the bridge.
Which will be more.
Yes, more.
We're missing a zero for the construction and anything else on that. Now, as you recall during budget, we were looking at trying to start replacing bridge by bridge, the rail trail bridges, before we get to the very large across the Cedar here. Ivanhoe was going to be the bridge we were going to select, and right at the end, kind of make our way back, when the reports came in as to the condition of the bridges, the weight restrictions were significant for Baskins Creek. It's also the largest bridge other than the rail trail bridge here in the Cedar River. And so it came to where we had to pivot and decide that we may have to fix this one instead. I don't think waiting until the year would have been a good idea. So it's going to be a challenge from a funding standpoint. I think we've figured out where that's going to come from. We did have a half million in the budget for Ivanhoe. The bond itself, we had good standing, they made us a premium of over $225,000. That'll get us close to what I think the construction cost will be. So as you know, we've also listed the local option sales tax, since trails are allowed even in the current one, and possibly the capital improvement fund if we need additional funding for administration, engineering, et cetera. So when the bids come in, I'm hoping they're less than we anticipate, and that'll help offset some of this. But either way, I think this is the bridge we had to get done, and there are, is it two more that have restrictions, Mike, for weight, that we'll look at next year? So we really don't have a lot of choice in some of this, as you don't want to separate the one side of the trail from the other, with the bridge you can't cross. And so all the restrictions are down to, I think, a pickup is what's allowed, and nothing more on this one. So it's good to get the biggest one out of the way, but it was certainly not something anticipated. So I've been able to, again, locate funding and try and get this done. It should start next spring, take about 10 weeks, and as I said, the estimate's about $760,000 for construction. We're hoping for better bids than that, when the time comes. And then we'll continue, hopefully, year to year, to continue replacing those smaller bridges along the way, until we tackle the very large one out here across the Cedar.
And judging from the timeline, it looks like we should be done May next year?
Weather permitting.
If we're lucky, hopefully, hopefully.
And how old are these? Is it about 2000?
Year 2000?
Yeah.
These are, these are.
Oh, I guess I was thinking when the trail opened, but.
Well, yes, the trail opened in 99, but the railroad corridor was from 1904. I suspect that many of these trestle bridges are second generation and not original, but yeah, they're definitely aging out. The one that's in the best shape is the one just, the first bridge you encounter, because that was actually washed out in 1968. It used to be a culvert.
That's a new one.
And so that's actually got a section with some steel beams underneath. So that one's actually in pretty decent shape.
So these have had a good life.
Yeah, and as you can all see and have seen photos of the condition of the one across the Cedar River here, it's, it's, it's time.
It's Banton Bridge.
It's the good one.
Yes.
It's correct. Roll call vote.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote for.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Vote of six yes, zero noes, resolution 23-123 is approved. Item 15 is resolution 23-124, a resolution approving the termination of a 36-month Elevate On-Site 24x7 Service Program Agreement between Bergen KDV Limited and the City of Waverly, Iowa. Do we have a motion?
I will move approval of resolution 23-124, a resolution approving the termination of a 36-month Elevate On-Site 25x7 Service Program Agreement between Bergen KDV Limited and the City of Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Myers. Any discussion on this?
It's nice to have those out clauses in our contracts. It's a good reminder for everyone to put those in when you can.
Yes, sir. We have been kind of looking at different vendors for a number of things. You know, we've got our audit out a while ago. We've kind of did a lot of things out, and we've had Bergen for almost seven years now under contract. Prior to that, it was a come and fix it when we break it situation. And we've replaced most of our equipment, all of our equipment. We're on a second run of replacing our equipment. We still seem to be having some issues here and there that we're trying to get addressed, and so it just got to the point where, you know, I kind of wanted to take another direction and then look at a different firm. No offense to Bergen, they've gotten bigger and bigger. They were just purchased again six weeks ago by a company called Creative Solutions, I think it is. They're a wealth management firm. When they were Networking Solutions, which was the original small IT firm, that's when we had started working with them. We've seen a number of individuals go through now, and our technicians keep changing out. We're just, from staff, there's discussions, we just kind of want to get back to a smaller firm that is truly going to be just IT, instead of a national firm. I'm sure there's advantages to having a much bigger firm, which is the point, we just want to make a change, and that's where the next item you'll see is, is that change. So we're just asking to give our 60-day notice to get out of this contract and move forward with a different firm.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Bergen.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Vote for.
Yes.
By a vote of six yes, zero noes, resolution 23-124 is adopted. Item number 16 then is resolution 23-125, a resolution authorizing a master services agreement and statement of work for fully managed IT services with RSPN. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution 23-125, a resolution authorizing a master services agreement and statement of work for fully managed IT services with RSPN of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the amount of $6,920 one-time fee for transition of service plus $6,920 per month for a term of three years from the commencement date.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Discussion on this?
Just, this is the company we've choose, we've chosen to go with. Dave Hansen, who's the head of sales for RSPN is here. If you have any questions about the company itself, I'll give you a brief outline. They've been around for almost five years. Mostly gentlemen live right in this area, whether it's Denver, between Denver and Waverly, Cedar Falls. They're a six-man group?
Seven.
Seven now. There you go, they've already grown. And so they recently have acquired Wave Utilities, of course, also owned by the city. We've heard very good things from that. They've rated manufacturing, Western Home, some other clients as well that I think have done very well for them. So as we started looking about a month and a half ago, with the news that the merger was happening with Bergen, this is the company that's going to lay the dawn. I think they have a good solid structure, and while it does cost a little more per month, I think we'll make that up in our less downtime. Just a different view on how the network administration ought to be done, and that's kind of what we're hunting for, so.
And this is a company that specializes in IT?
This is.
That's what they do.
If you want to sell any more, Dave, but I mean.
No, I agree, no, we're just IT services.
That's all they do is IT. They're not a CPA firm, they're not a wealth management. They do IT, and that's all they do.
Does that have a similar out?
Yes. We've been doing IT your whole life, so we're not going to be buying or anything.
Yeah, there's a similar out if need be, offense, Dave, but it's always in the lease contract, you make sure it's there just in case. So that's what we're looking at.
I had an interesting experience on RagBri when I wrote up next and had the name Bergen Brothers on it, which of course interested me because of Bergen, but of course Bergen KDV, and I was talking to him, and he was an accountant.
Yes.
And I was like surprised to find out that Bergen KDV was mostly accounting, and we just had their IT portion working for us. So I'm kind of pleased that we're hiring IT people to do our IT rather than accountants or something else.
Well, they had IT individuals, and give them a fair shake here. In 2015, there were three companies that merged, Networking Solutions, Bergen Paulson Accounting, and I'm not sure where the KDV came from, but they joined that group then, and they became Bergen KDV. So it was the recent acquisition that we had talked about, that going to a national wealth management firm, I wasn't sure how that was going to work. We really didn't get a lot of communication either, which was surprising as well. In fact, some of the communication we did, made us wonder if the contract was still good, because it didn't state that it was still there. So all that aside, we were already in the process of trying to look at a different vendor, and we were very pleased to find RSPN, and I think they'll do a great job for us.
Did this agreement have a renewal option in it after three years? I was looking for it here.
The RSPN agreement?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, it does state it can be renewed if you agree to one.
I didn't see that in here. And then on the, the transition fee, the upfront fee, will they come in and get us exactly where, up to speed, I guess, or where we need to be? Is that included in that?
That's really for our.
And do you know what you're getting yourself into?
I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll, we'll come in and get the systems in place. We need to install tools to do remote support, our antivirus tools, and security tools, all that stuff. We're going to put in a new firewall, a new backup, and disaster recovery system. So all that is kind of part of that, that transition services. So that's why we have an upfront fee for that.
Okay, so you'll be on every system?
Yeah, and then a lot of documentation of what's in place right now, so we know what we're getting into, and all of our techs are well informed, too.
Thank you for being here at the whole meeting.
Sure.
Blame James for putting you on the last docket.
Glad he taped that, please, sir.
Roll call vote.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
By a vote of six yes, zero noes, resolution 23-125 is adopted. Section K tonight is reports from boards and commissions. We have Waverly Leisure Services Commission minutes from April 20th, 2023, the Waverly Economic Development Commission minutes from May 9th, 2023, the Waverly Municipal Airport Commission minutes from June 8th, 2023, the Waverly Board of Adjustment minutes from June 12th, 2023, Waverly Historic Preservation Commission minutes from June 26th, 2023, and the Waverly Senior Center calendar for August 2023. All of those are accepted. Item L then is staff updates.
Yes, sir, I think we have a brief update tonight.
Yep. We are planning on closing the pool August 19th, the Saturday. Somehow we do have staff that long, so we're pretty happy that we've got enough staff to make it that far into the season. And then if anyone wants to go, and I'll call it a tour, it's not really a tour, but see the press boxes or the concession stand, feel free to get ahold of me, and we'll set up a time when we can walk through those. Restrooms are open all the time, so feel free to stop by and check those out if you like.
That's all we have tonight, sir.
All right. Item, section M then is city council comments. Ms. Myers.
Nothing for me.
Dr. Bergen.
I know that the Warburg football team has players returning this coming week. This is the beginning of Warburg College students returning to Waverly, so let's be a welcoming community. We should remember that Warburg College is a huge economic driver. If we want to imagine what life would be life without, without Warburg, we can think about poor Mount Pleasant, and then having to figure out what to do without Iowa Whelan University. So let's be a welcoming community, be thankful for what Warburg brings to the community. And if anyone wants to discuss city council business, I, please join me for a beer at the Braemer Avenue Brewery after the meeting.
Mr. Snyder.
Nothing for me.
Dr. Rothie?
Nothing.
Is vote for?
Nothing, thank you.
Anything for my guest council? All right. Dr. Bergen took my kind of note that we're moving into season of school stuff starting again. We got Warburg students coming back and athletes. We're going to have high school athletics preseason stuff will be starting up here, and kids are going